Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of February 7th. Mr. Pinho, do we have a need for a non-public this evening?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
That's good. Ex-Honorable General, there's a consideration of minutes for January 17th, the regular meeting.
I move we approve the minutes of January 17th.
Second.
Motion made, second to approve the minutes of the 17th for the regular meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we have a set of minutes for a special meeting on Wednesday, July 17th.
Motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, just a housekeeping issue. That has July on the date on the top.
Yes. It just dawned on me as I read it, it should be January 17th.
As amended.
Good with a second as amended?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a series of public hearings this evening. First one, Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing in accordance with the New Hampshire RSA 265:63 and RSA 41:11 on February 7th at 6:30 at the Town Hall. Two things, proposed ordinance entitled "Speed Limit Ordinance," reducing speed on River Street to 25 miles per hour, and also proposed installation of crosswalks at the intersection of the Cotton Valley Rail Trail and the following streets, River Street, Mass Landing, Witton Neck Road, and Bryant Road, to be installed and maintained by Cotton Valley Rail Trail Committee, Inc. So, I think we'll probably take these as two separate parts. Should we, Mr. Pinho, do the speed limit first?
Probably a good idea.
Yep. So, we'll address the speed limit public hearing to start with. Is there somebody who wants to talk to us from the River Street area to?
I can just briefly talk about the speed limit. My name is John Malley, and I'm actually standing in for Jim Connors, who is the president of our homeowners association in Crescent Point. And the one modification that we would suggest is actually 20 miles an hour. That is the current speed limit, for example, on the parallel road of Witton Neck Road as it crosses the rail trail. And I think that's an appropriate kind of tweaking of that and is a very adequate speed, safe speed for people to be cognizant of the dangers of the crossing.
Okay.
And then I'll speak to the other parts of the proposal at whenever you wish me to.
Okay. Thank you. What I'll do at this point, I'll open up the public hearing if anybody who just had a little presentation there on, if anybody has any comments we'd like to make on the speed limit portion of, on River Street, that would be the time. No one else wants to come up and talk? Okay. I'll close the public hearing on that part. Board members, do we have any questions, comments?
Just a question. Do you know how often you are going to be repainting the crosswalks? Is it as needed? Are you going to be doing them?
Well, we're doing just the speed limit now.
Or just the speed limit, okay.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be happy to speak to that.
Make a motion. You don't want to send any questions?
Well, I do have one letter to read that was submitted here. I'll read it into the record here. Addresses both speed limit and the crosswalks. Address the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen, reference public hearings, town ordinance for 2724. Items: Speed limit, River Street; crosswalks at the intersection of Cotton Valley Road Trail. First portion is regarding the speed limit in River Street. I would be in support of lowering the speed limit on River Street. The area heading east on River Street after the rail trail before the hill is narrow and unsafe at higher speeds. I would also like to address that traffic heading down the same hill towards Route 109 may be unaware of a blind driveway at my residence at 22 River Street. I would ask to consider signage indicating a blind driveway since the entrance is my primary drive. I'll just read that part for now because we're on the River Street speed limit. This is, "Thank you for your consideration, Barry Elliott at 22 River Street." So, I want to get that in the record also. So, now, yeah, I'd be ready for a motion if anybody wants.
Nick a motion to approve the proposed ordinance entitled "Speed Limit Ordinance," which will be reducing speed on River Street to 20 miles per hour.
Second.
Motion made by Luke, seconded by Dave, to reduce the speed limit to 20 miles per hour on River Street. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That part's set. Now, we'll talk about the crosswalks. Let's see. This will be for proposed installation of crosswalks at the intersection of Cotton Valley Rail Trail and the following streets. So, it's River Street plus Mass Landing, Witton Neck Road, and Bryant Road to be installed and maintained by Cotton Valley Rail Trail Committee. So, if anybody, gentlemen, would like to speak to this one?
Once again, I'm a fill-in, and so I will try to follow the notes that Jim Connors forwarded to me so I don't digress too much here. I represent particularly the Crescent Point Association. That's 28 different homes that are in Crescent Point. And we have River Street that is our entrance way, and we have a side road as well, Blackberry Lane, and all the residences are in there. And that development, in the 22 years that my wife and I have lived here, has grown to its full capacity from being, you know, maybe about half-built at the time that we went there. We have, over time, as an association, been very concerned about the dangers of the crossing of River Street. We have worked in conjunction, and several of us, myself included, are also members of the Cotton Valley Rail Trail Committee. And so, in conjunction with them, we have added several on our own signs to warn pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, about the dangers of crossing River Street. And we also have put some additional signs of our own just to advise motorists. And so, we have these little people-at-play kinds of signs and various things like that to further amplify that kind of message. We also take it upon ourselves to clear the vegetation all around that crossing point so that people who are driving both ways can see the emerging pedestrian and bicycle traffic. So, all of that led us to be in favor of, and we appreciate your support in reducing that, the speed limit to 20 miles per hour, and that will be, as I say, similar to what we have on Witton Neck Road. But we also are in favor of allowing the Cotton Valley Rail Trail Committee to install and maintain a pedestrian crosswalk. And when they, when and if they get approved by the Board of Selectmen, the Crescent Point Association further is going to donate $200 to the Cotton Valley Rail Trail Committee to, as part of the support, plus offer a lot of sort of sweat equity capital to a lot of the laboring and things to try to keep the cost of installation, maintenance, and that sort of thing. I would just say, over the 22 years that we've had the privilege of living in Crescent Point, it, the intensity of travel on the rail trail has picked up, and its popularity has picked up immensely. It's a wonderful asset for the town, and we want it to be a safe one, particularly when school is out, it's often, and the weather's nicer, kids are there on their bicycles, are not often, sometimes are not as cognizant as they should be of the crossing area. And so, all of these things are, we want, we want all of this to be maximized with, particularly with a painted crossing that amplifies on these other messages. So, appreciate your support of allowing that to happen. Yes.
So, are the crosswalks, and this is for the board, for everybody, are they subject to and will they conform to any town ordinances and state statutes? Do they have to be painted a certain way? Do they have to be a certain width? Are people going to have to stop the way they do with the cars for our crosswalks in downtown on our state roads? Are there any town ordinances that we have that cover the way the sidewalks are used? Because these are going to be on private property, are they? Or are some of them on private right-ofways?
If we're to our leader of the Crescent River, Cotton Valley Rail Trail Committee.
I mean, are these, do we know, are all these roads private roads?
No, these are all town roads.
These are all town roads.
Right. Let's let them do the presentation, and we'll have a public hearing, and we'll get into all that. Okay?
I know you guys were here really late. I stuck it out till five minutes to 12:00. God bless you, so it's very short. Good evening. My name is Noreen McDonald. I live here in Wolfboro, and I'm the president of the Cotton Valley Trail Committee, Incorporated. Thirty-two years ago, a group of citizens went to the state requesting permission to construct a trail within the New Hampshire State of Right-of Way. At the same time, the Cotton Valley Rail Trail Club that has the railcars requested permission to use those rails from Wolfboro through to Wakefield. Over the next 22 years, these groups, along with the Bureau of Trails, worked together, raising funds, grants, private donations, lost thousands of hours working to construct the trail, which was completed in 2017. And now, it is, we have 12 miles to cover, to maintain. The entire trail is maintained. The infrastructure is built, was built in 1870, and that is what the Cotton Valley Rail Trail Club maintains. We maintain the actual trail. Thanks to a grant from the Meredith Village Savings Bank, the rail club moves each side of the trail several times each summer with a seven-foot sickle bar. The Cotton Valley Trail Committee is an all-volunteer organization. This past year, our members put in over 1,400 hours to keep it that maintained. We are here tonight to request your permission to paint piano-key crosswalks in the State Right-of Way on the following streets, which you already know. The goal is to create a safer environment for trail users and vehicles crossing these roads. Many of us have had near accidents with bicycles at these locations. The biggest danger is the bicyclists that ignore the trail stop signs. Those who live on or frequent these streets know to slow down when crossing the trail, but tourists, delivery drivers, construction vehicles, and/or vehicles with boat trailers do not. The goal of the crosswalk in between the rails is to create a sense of awareness that they are about to cross a road. It's a way, something, a method, to slow down the bicyclists. In the spring, we painted a similar crosswalk in Brookfield that has been very, very successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another issue that we deal with along the trail is people who steal the stop signs or pull them out. River Street this summer, someone had pulled it out and threw the sign in the poison ivy. None of us were going to go in and go get it, so we'd go buy another sign or get another sign and put them in. They also removed the 10 mile an hour signs. We feel that the crosswalks can't be removed. They can't pick them up and throw them away. And we have so many out-of-towners using the trail, they don't know that there would be a stop sign there if it's been thrown away. We find them in the lake, we find them in the woods. Very frustrating. The, oh, last page. Almost done, guys. The crosswalks will be permanent. Our goal is that no one would be hurt, and no one wants anyone to be, their life destroyed because they hit a pedestrian or bicyclist. I know personally, coming up on Bryant Road, I came up one day, I always slow down. This woman came across, by the time she saw me, she stopped in front of my car and was like, "Oh, my God, I could have been hit." They don't even realize it, so I crawl across that intersection. The Cotton Valley Trail Committee will be responsible for painting and maintaining these crosswalks. We have the stencil. We will use the required paint by, the paint required by the Wolfboro DPW. We have met with Steve, we're on board. The stencil is that style, which is piano, which is what he wants. And we would appreciate your consideration and approval of this request. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. The first question I heard from you is, this is the State Right-of Way, and we have the permission from the state to do it, and we're here requesting that we, because the State Right-of Way crosses the road, that we put that crosswalk in. It's not going to be as wide as the town ones. The rail trail is, between the rails, it's 56 and a quarter inches wide. So, we don't need it to be like overboard. Any questions?
Not right now. What I'll do is I'll open up a public hearing for this also, see if any other questions come up or not. So, we'll open up the public hearing regarding the crosswalks right now, so.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Bob Sterndale. I live on Forest Road, and I'm here just to add briefly my support for the crosswalks on the rail trail as well. It's an exceptional recreational facility that sees more and more use all the time, and it seems like just an obvious improvement to that at essentially no cost to the town. So, thank you for your support. And as an aside, I don't mind the 20 mile an hour speed limit, but as a former selectman, a few years ago anyway, I happen to know that the state didn't allow you to set speed limits below 25. You might want to check on that.
If I could respond to that, Brad?
Sure.
So, you are correct, we cannot enforce anything below 25, but we can make it advisory as a recommendation to be 25.
Any other public comments while we have the public hearing open on this? I'll also, this time, I'll read in the second part of this letter, this gentleman wrote to us regarding the crosswalks. Crosswalks at the intersection of Cotton Valley Rail Trail. I would be in support of the proposed crosswalks at the proposed locations. I have seen many incidents on River Street where bikes using the trail ignore signs to stop at the roadways and bike, and walk bikes across. I witnessed a few near misses when the bikers did not even look for traffic while crossing the road. The addition of the crosswalks would alert drivers to the danger of pedestrians and bikes and giving them the right-of-way. Most of the residents on River Street already yield to those crossings, those crossing the road without the crosswalks, but the new crosswalks would be beneficial to those traveling unfamiliar with the trail crossing. Thank you again for your consideration of these matters, Barry Elliott, 22 River Street. So, this time, I'll close the public hearing. So, did that answer your questions there, Brian? You had there?
I'm all set.
There was a comment I was going to make, too, and it sounded like Steve's already been in contact with them regarding the type of paint and the pattern to use, and as long as we continue with that, with that road, that route there, you know, everything's going to be good, so. Any other questions, comments from the board?
No. Motion to approve the installation of crosswalks at the intersection of the Cotton Valley Rail Trail and the following streets, River Street, Mass Landing, Witton Neck Road, and Bryant Road, to be installed and maintained by the Cotton Valley Rail Trail Committee.
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're all set. Thank you. Let's see. Next on the agenda, Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 7th, for the acceptance of unanticipated funds for an amount donated that is valued less than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3A relative to donation of two plaques to be placed at the Pop Whalen Ice and Arts Arena.
Please. Good evening. Jeff McGinnis. We have planned a wall of fame, which will be installed in the lobby of Pop Whalen, and will evolve over time. This is a way to recognize the exceptional efforts and contributions of coaches, volunteers, players, et cetera.
Could you just have you come a little closer to the mic? I'll move the mic closer to you.
Sorry.
It's hard for people at home to hear.
Yeah, my apologies. Sorry. My name's Jeff McGinnis, Friends of Pop Whalen. We have planned a wall of fame in the lobby of the Pop Whalen Ice and Arts Center. This will be, and so what we're looking to do with this donation is, the initial cohort recognize those members of the wall of fame, and it's a great step forward to completing the building. I believe you have an overview of the proposal and a photo concept. If you don't, I have a copy.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks, Jeff.
sort of what we've borrowed as concepts. Over time, this wall will evolve, obviously, but we do have donor and donation secured money in the bank to purchase and install the initial plaque.
Do you have a location kind of identified?
Yes. In the lobby, I guess it would be towards the east end. So, if you are in the lobby, looking at the ice surface, kind of where the doors to the old building would have been, if you were to turn around, that's where we'll start this installation.
Okay.
And it will slowly grow over time and fill that wall.
And this is consistent with what was in the initial conception of the entire project?
Okay.
Along that wall?
Yep.
Thank you. Yes, good point.
All right.
Now, a question would be, when would you be presenting this to the public?
We have a, sort of a target date in mind of having this installed for the end of March. We have, March 23rd. We have a couple of dates in mind for some events that may be more fundraising oriented at the rink, and this would be a great part of that. But, yeah, we'd like to have things as finished as possible in anticipation of some significant events in July.
Okay. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments on this project? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Anything else? Any other questions, comments from the board? Or a motion?
Motion to accept the donation of a value of less than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95B relative to the donation of plaques to be installed on a wall of fame in the Pop Whalen Ice Arena.
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Luke, to approve this. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 7th, to consider temporary event permit for the Friends of the Wolfboro Community Bandstand to hold a summer concert series on the following dates, June 29th, July 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, August 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st, 2024, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-12. Do we have somebody here from the community bandstand to talk to us about this? Don't see anybody here. This is kind of a repeated, ongoing concert series they do every year, so at this point, I'll open up a public hearing if anybody has any questions. We'll see if we can answer them from the information they gave us. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
All right. I would move to approve a temporary event permit for the Friends of Wolfboro Community Bandstand to hold a summer concert series on the following dates, June 29th, July 6th, July 13th, July 20th, July 27th, August 3rd, August 10th, August 17th, August 24th, August 31st, 2024, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-12.
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Luke, to approve the permit. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, temporary event permit, public hearing, Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on February 7th, to consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to host an antique fair at the Clark Museum on July 6th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-13.
I'm Pat Hotter, and the vice president in charge of some of these events. And this is something that we do every summer. We're having three events, but this is, for the first one, July 6th. It's pretty much the same as it was last year. We have a few vendors that are local. It's outside on the grounds of the Clark Museum, and it's from 11:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon. Parking for the vendors is off-site. They, you know, move their vehicles, and there's been no problem with parking for the past several years. So, any questions?
Okay. I'll open up the public hearing if the audience has any questions for Pat here at all, or comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve a temporary event permit for Wolfboro Historical Society to host the Antique Fair at the Clark Museum on August 10th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
That was July 2nd. I mean, July 6th.
July 6th.
July 6th.
July 6th, excuse me.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All set on that one, Pat? The next one?
The next one is the same event.
We just got to read it into the minutes first to start it, so.
Oh, right.
Wolfboro Board of Selectmen, let's see, will the public hearing on Wednesday, February 7th, to consider a temporary event permit for Wolfboro Historical Society to host an antique fair at the Clark Museum on August 10th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-14. There you go.
Okay. It's the same event and same timeframe. The one thing we did change is that there is no rain date. If it rains, it's done. You know, we're not going to have it. So, aside from that, it's the same as previous years.
Okay. Open up the public hearing. Anybody have any questions or comments for Pat? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Move to approve a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to host the Antique Fair at the Clark Museum. the Antique Fair at the Clark Museum on August 10th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-14.
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Dave. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. One more for Pat here. Board of Select will hold a public hearing Wednesday, February 7th, to consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to host an antique fair at the Clark Museum on October 12th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-15. Same thing.
Same event.
Different day.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience have any questions? Close the public hearing. Board members?
Does this one have a rain date?
None of them have rain dates.
Okay, all right. Move to approve a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to host the Antique Fair at the Clark Museum on October 12th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-15.
Second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Hope for good weather.
Thank you.
Next public hearing, we have Board of Select will hold a public hearing on February 7th, to consider a temporary event permit for Brewster Academy to host the On the Green I, Arts and Crafts Festival at Dewolfe Field, AD Academy Drive, on July 13th and 14th, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-16.
Christine Brown from Brewster. It's July 12th through the 14th, actually.
July 12th through the 14th?
Yep.
Okay.
It's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday event. Basically, they sell arts and crafts and some snack foods. Proceeds from field rentals go towards day student scholarships. Try to keep it short and sweet. You've been here a long time.
Okay. I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience have any questions? Close the public hearing. Board members?
Move to approve a temporary event permit for Brewster Academy to host the On the Green Arts and Craft Festival at Dewolfe Field, AD Academy Drive, on July 12th through 14th, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-16.
Second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one more here. The Wolfboro Board of Select will hold a public hearing to consider, on February 7th, to consider a temporary event permit for Brewster Academy to host On the Green II Arts and Crafts Festival at Dewolfe Field and AD Academy Drive, on August 9th to 11th. We've got the right dates on that one here. From 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-17.
Same event, different day.
Same thing, different day, yep. Open up the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Board members?
Move to approve a temporary event permit for Brewster Academy to host the On the Green II Arts and Craft Festival at Dewolfe Field, AD Academy Drive, on August 9th through 11th, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Permit number 2024-17.
Second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All set. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a bulk vote. We have, let's see, weekly manifests, January 19th of $180,000, January 26th of $619,000, January 31st, $200,000, which is a payment on the fire truck lease, the new fire truck we got. February 2nd for $2.15 million, which included a school payment. We have property tax credit and intend to cut wood on a lot on Pork Hill Road. I'd entertain a motion on the bulk vote.
I move we approve the bulk vote, A through C.
Second.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Brian to approve the bulk vote. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have no board of committee appointments, so new business. We have hawkers and peddlers license for spots number three and number four. So, do we have either of the folks here for these?
It appears so.
So, let's see, which one will get here first? Is the?
Alley Caps.
What's that?
Alley Caps.
Alley Caps, the first one, Alley Cooper. She's done this before.
Yeah.
She has a great little business. I think we were notified by Amy that she probably wasn't going to make it. She let us know in advance. I don't have a problem approving alleys to start with. Does anybody have a problem with approving either alleys or?
No, they were both, they both, these are both renewals.
Both repeats, yeah.
So, you know, they're both, they're both paid last year, so.
I think they're pending their state permit.
Yep.
So, we'd make a motion pending their approval from the state.
Move to issue hawkers and peddlers spots number three to Alley Caps and number four to Z Hayford pending state approval, state licenses approval.
Second.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Dave to approve the hawkers and peddlers licenses for spots three and four. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next up is the Winnebago Jet Ski License Agreement for 2024.
Hi.
Yep.
My name is Liz Hartford. I'm here on behalf of Wolfboro Jet Ski Rentals. We're looking to request renewal of the lease of the Back Bay docks for the 14th season.
It's pretty much the same we've been doing for the previous years.
Yes.
You've looked at the contract all over, the license agreement rather, Jim and others.
Yeah, it's the same. It's been updated to reflect current dates, but.
Dates, yep.
All right, so you put the current dates in it, because our copy doesn't have the current dates.
Yes.
Okay.
It will, it will have the current dates.
Do we have a copy of the certificate of insurance?
That's normally provided at signature.
Okay.
Want to have a motion?
Jim, are we going to, are we going to submit an invoice to them for payment or just accept a check, or how are we going to do this?
Traditionally, they've provided the check in line with the signature timeframe.
Okay.
So, and mine does have the correct dates, Brian, so I'm not sure what is going on there.
Okay.
Ours is just blank, not incorrect, but mine has blank on the top.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that would just be the date that it's signed.
Right.
But the date of May 15th, 2024, through September 30th, 2024, is the accurate timeframe.
I have a date on mine.
Yeah. The top line is just when it's signed.
Yep. So, I'd entertain a motion on this.
I'll move to issue license agreement to Winnebago Jet Ski for 2024, on receipt of payment, the amount of $1,000.
Second.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
You're all set.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the Boat Agent Agreement with Goodyear Boat Company. Anybody here from Goodyear Boat? This is an annual thing. Also, they get permission to register boats in the town of Wolfboro here.
It's worked out very well.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we issue the 2024 Boat Agent Agreement to Goodyear Boat Company.
Second.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Brian to issue the agreement with Goodyear Boat Company. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next on the agenda, authorization to extend, I'm sorry, authorization to use highway block grant funds for Trask Mountain. Mr. Steve.
So, so we recently were awarded unanticipated funds in the form of a block grant of $50,000 and change. I'd like to utilize this money to finish and to continue some of the projects we had to shut down last year, one of them being Trask, and some of the engineering that we have outstanding for that, and then other projects as they come up over the next couple of months.
Makes sense to me. Any, any questions from the board? Because I think it was, what, $70,000 you had to, would you stop spending?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one thousand, so this gives.
Yes, I know the number.
Gives a good chunk of a buck anyway, so.
Good.
Any questions, comments from the board? Questions for Steve?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve and authorize the use of the highway block grant funds in the amount
Second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Luke to authorize the use of the block grant fund. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Next on the agenda, authorization to, to extend the Port Wayland Drainage Project funding.
So, basically, this boils down to you need to authorize me to sign documents for this project so that they can be continued, specific to the ARPA funds. Is that correct, Steve?
Yeah, we had to do this for the Mill Street Pump Station, too, a while ago, so. What we basically need is a motion to authorize the extension of the ARPA grant funds and then to authorize Jim to sign all the documents relating to that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next up, Heritage Commission Report on the Townwide Historical Resources.
Thanks for making time for me. I hope you read the report in your packet. You should have had the report in your packet. Is that correct?
I didn't get the report. We got the.
I believe they got the electronic version.
Okay, yeah.
They got this summary from you in memo, but I believe they got the electronic.
Yeah, we got that electronically, yep.
Good, okay. And you read it?
We looked through it. I did, anyway. I was trying to read it word for word.
We have, the Heritage Commission has enjoyed working on this project very much, and our consultant has been very responsive. She came up and met with us in December to present her draft. We continued the discussion after she left our meeting. We discussed it at our January meeting, and next week, we plan to make our final corrections and photo substitutions for her. Per the extension on the contract that we signed, we will get her, our changes by the end of February, and then her final document will be due to us by the end of March, and she's agreed to that timeframe, so we're very pleased about that. She made a number of recommendations in addition to assessing the key historic resources in the town, and she divided the resources into broad sections in the town's history, early settlement, et cetera, the steamboat area, era, early hotels. And we decided that the cutoff for historic resources would be 1950, although there are a few things that are post-1950 that she felt were important enough to include. So, you will see those there. There's also an extensive bibliography and copies of all the historic maps of Wolfboro, and then representative photographs of some of the examples that she chose to include and that reflect all the periods of architectural history in the town and how that particular building relates to the period in which it was built. When I asked what surprised her about the survey of town historic resources, she said, "You have an amazing number of early capes." She counted about 80, which really surprised her. And the other thing she said was, "Wonderful barns in this community." She was pleased that we do offer the tax discount to people who put their barns under the discretionary barn preservation easement. There were a number of recommendations for future work, including further study on barns. We might want to do a barn survey. We might want to look more closely at former agricultural areas. We might want to do more work on the seven original farms and properties on North Main Street, although I know the Historical Society has already done a lot of that, as have South Wolfboro's been documented. One of the things we'd like to pick up on in her list of future work is documenting the early camps and cottages, both on Winnebago, the Sewell Road and the islands, as well as on Lake Wentworth. Resources that are specifically cited in her photographic section. And then use that inventory work to create an interactive online map of historic resources in the town. I'm not going to be the one to do that, but I hope someone will, and we'd like to work with you on that. She also recommended that we continue to identify properties for the barn easement program. We do know we have one new one, which will be applying this year. State and National Register of Historic Places nominations. There are some planning tools that she suggested we look at, including a neighborhood heritage district, which is a new planning tool and not as strict and limited as a historic district, which we used to have. It's much more flexible. A demolition review ordinance so that when some of these historic buildings might be threatened, we have a process to work with the owner to explore alternatives and see if different solutions can be found. Many towns have cemetery commissions. We do not, and so that was one of the recommendations, was to promote the further maintenance, preservation, and study of the town cemeteries, public and private ones. Continue to investigate and record archaeological sites worthy of protection. Talked about preservation easements on barns, but they can also be done on significant buildings. And then continue our education and public awareness programs. As I said in my memo, all of this is valuable, but it's what we do next that matters. So, we'd like your input as we work to finalize the draft report and determine next steps. We have already invited our consultant to come present her report in May, which is National Preservation Month, at our Second Annual Heritage Awards. Our tentative date for that is May 22nd. So, who else should weigh in on the draft before it's finalized, besides the Heritage Commission? Do we have your okay to lead efforts to finalize this document, because your names are on the contract? And what ideas, if any, do you have on content and implementation of the recommendations?
Okay, that's, I understand, those are the things you're going to, you'd like to address or have discussed at the February 17th meeting, correct?
That was a typo. I wrote, this is on your agenda for February 17th, but I should have said February 7th, and I apologize. Our meeting next week is the 14th, Wednesday, at 5:00. So, if you don't want to give me feedback tonight, if you'd like to discuss and get back to me, that's okay, too. But I'd like some indication from you that you've taken a look at this and know what it's all about and are giving us the go-ahead to proceed to next steps.
Yeah, I think as far as I'm concerned, I'm really fine with you folks, you know, moving, you know, to go ahead to finalize the document and, you know, go to the next steps on that. I don't personally have any other ideas right now on the content or on the implementation, how that would be addressed. I would assume this would be presented also to the planning board and stuff there, because I think.
Well, the Heritage Commission is really only an advisory board to the. Well, the Heritage Commission is really only an advisory board to the selectmen.
To the selectmen, okay.
So we'll come back to you and we want to take on any of these recommendations and let you know, but some of them are already part of the master plan and I think those are the things that we'd probably tackle first because we already have that authorization.
That's why I kind of thought of that because it seemed like there was definitely a connection with the planning board on a lot of these items, so. Brian?
February 14th is your next meeting?
Yes, it's a week from today.
And where is it?
It's in the Planning Department office, in the conference room.
Okay, what time?
5:00.
I'd like to come and give some thoughts, then. Is that okay?
We'd love to have you come.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
It's on the town calendar, too.
Any other comments or questions from the board for Maggie?
I'd just like to thank Maggie for getting this done. I know there were some struggles initially, but they've crossed the finish line with it and it's a nice document and I think the right people are on the committee to make the recommendations going forward. They're passionate about these things and it's a great document for the town.
Thank you, Jim.
I'd like to get Linda's input, too.
My friend Kathy Eaton is sitting right here and I realize perhaps she would like a chance to take a look at it as well, so I will let Kathy have a crack at it and Jean Danoo as well. We do have Mark Lush from the Historical Society on the Heritage Commission, but I think Jean is the one who really has dug into the history of certain buildings. Our goal here is to not only afford data for the planning board and to help the town manage growth effectively, but to preserve the character of the town, build public awareness of the wonderful resources that we have and do whatever we can to try to avoid too much damage to our brand, if you will. So I hope you all agree and thank you for your support.
It could be used as an outline for architecture going forward in the town.
I was part of the team that developed our architectural standards and so perhaps that suggestion can be incorporated into those standards so that we could add representative photos to some of the standards. I think right now, we wrote it in a very general way and I'm beginning to see that specific images and guidelines, visual guidelines would be very helpful.
Yeah, we can talk about that at your meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay, next on the agenda, discussion of the Wolfboro Trolley, the annual progress report.
Thank you so much. You know, it's beginning to sound like summer's coming tonight. So you should have gotten something in your packet, which you have so much to do in all this time, given what you were up to last night, so. But you have this little piece that looks like this, if you had a chance. I'm gonna review it, because you probably haven't had much of a chance to look at it. I did bring copies of the letters, both from Jared Mario of the Mount and then from Chief Stu Chase, where we were looking at things last December. So you have the whole copies?
Right. Thank you.
Have the originals, not take my order for it?
Thank you.
Jim?
No.
And...
Thank you.
So I'm talking about the shuttle. We, as I say, it showed strong forward progress in its second season, after we opted to run the shuttle free and we also added a second stop last year. So we decided to go with the free shuttle. That was a change we made at around the Fourth of July, so that all of the marketing that we'd done before was not pushing that, things that had been printed ahead of time. However, we were able to change things on the website, social media and in our ads. We decided to do that after we ran the shuttle free for the Fourth of July parade and we saw the comparison then versus the year before. And knowing it was the second year and that we really had to decide, I had to go all-in on it, so I said, "Okay, we're gonna run it free for the summer and we'll see what happened." And the response was very, very positive. Daily ridership consistently increased over the summer. So the week after the Fourth, we averaged about 15 people a day. By the time we got to the August 21st, we were averaging 45 to 50 people a day. And I love percentage statistics. Don't you love statistics? So with an overall increase, we showed a 400% over 2022. What did that mean in real numbers? As we know, in 2022, our first year, we really only had about 200 riders. So we documented. Now, this is where it's hazy, because what the drivers were doing, because it's free, people were getting on and off when they could. They made notes on the daily sheet and so I had notes indicating that we had about 600 people. But I know that we had more than that because they were busy and people were getting on and off, they weren't able to write it down. And some drivers did a little bit better job than others. But clearly, we saw a significant increase. We picked up as many people at, we added the stop over at Wolfboro Falls next to Linda's Flowers and we got as many people there as we got at Kingswood. There was clearly saying, "This is great because it's where I'm coming into town." And we get on there, we don't have to drive through the traffic to get to Kingswood. Who rode the shuttle? While some people who worked downtown did use it, employees, the majority of the people were passengers, were visitors and residents, but residents were enjoying it and that grew as it went on. Particularly, people loved, they could get a free trolley ride with their kiddos. So we had some incidents, whereas we had some young gentlemen who, I'm not sure they were gentlemen now, the young lads, we'll call them, who were abusing the privilege. So we put into our process and in our training this year how we're going to handle that sort of thing. So we had great partnerships. The Mount Washington Cruises, we worked with those folks and of course, they have a two-and-a-half-hour ride coming out of the town docks. And last year, the police department was enforcing the town ordinance, which had a two-hour limit. So we worked with the Mount, they used their website, we used ours and people began taking that shuttle down for that. And the good thing, it gave us a nice measure because the people then needed a ride back and we discovered they didn't want to go back when they got off of the boat. They didn't want to go back till four or five o'clock and we didn't want to take them back either until then because we wanted them to spend more time and more money in town. So that was very positive and his comments, and I sent the whole, gave the whole letter to you, but while our company, this is from Jared Mario, the general manager of Mount Washington Cruises, quote, "While our company only experienced a modest increase in riders for the year 2023 season, the port of Wolfboro saw almost a 20% increase during July and August, while other ports declined. We believe that this increase is largely due to the parking solution. In fact, once Kingswood was no longer a parking option and we stopped promoting the program in September, ridership fell to levels consistent with previous years. In my opinion, while Wolfboro does not have a public transit program, the trolley is playing an important role toward attracting visitors to the area by alleviating concerns about parking." So, but they, in my report, that's the end of Jared's comments, "The decrease in the traffic congestion and increase in available parking spaces downtown last summer can be attributed to the Wolfboro Police Department's enforcement of the two-hour parking ordinance," as Chief Stu Chase indicated in his December email to me. And he said, quote, "I believe that after the public education phase was concluded," and he put that in quotes, "The department's aggressive stance on the two-hour limit was a big factor in getting compliance with the intent and purpose in the ordinance. Your trolleys were a great service for visitors, residents and merchants in the downtown area and the town. And partnering with the school district and the Mount Washington were innovative ideas. Please be assured of our continued support as we all seek to ease the parking issues and traffic flow in our community." We clearly saw a difference last year in terms of the congestion, the frantic state of affairs downtown that we saw in 2022 and '21 in previous years. So the police department issued, according to the chief, 258 parking violations last summer as compared to 96 in 2022. So what we want to do this year is to expand the collaboration. I've talked to Tom Waxmith, who runs the U.S. Mailboat and which is another two-and-a-half-hour ride. I hope you guys can stay awake till you, I'm sorry. I'm feeling bad for you. So I talked with Tom and he said, "This is a great idea." Because again, they have a two-and-a-half-hour ride, so if we can get the folks that are going to take that boat ride. Also, got a call in to Martha Cummings with the New Hampshire Boat Museum, if we can capture the people that are riding the Millie B and get them riding the shuttle. So it's moving. We're making progress here. We are, from, the route takes us, when we go to Linda's Flowers, we come around Bay Street, so Taylor Community would love us to stop there. We're hoping to do that so that those people who would ride downtown, walk downtown, but there isn't a sidewalk, they can ride the shuttle down and go back and they don't have to bring their cars downtown. I know that we saw interesting things happen. Morrissey's, we had people come in from the docks and take the shuttle up to Morrissey's once they found out there was a free ride up there. And we have for years, people want to get on the trolley to ride back after they go over to Wolf Trap on Bay Street, so, but that, they will now have a free shuttle so that we don't have to negotiate what they're gonna pay, you know, whatever. So that's gonna, and it comes more often, every half hour instead of every hour. So we know there's more potential here and we're gonna keep it going this year. We would like two things from the town. We would like to use that North Main Street parking lot. People ask when we're gonna have a stop up there because then we capture the people coming in from that end of the town. And if we do that, we'll also probably be able to pick up the people at the Inn on Main, so they aren't driving downtown. We'd like to have that and we'd like to have a sign, permission again to erect another sign up there if we were able to have that. So that's basically what I have to say and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Of course, this is, again, I'm out seeing all the customers now. This report I put together to send out to the people who will be hopefully renewing their signs on Jolly the Trolley. And of course, it's commensurate on whether that happens or not, but I'm optimistic about that.
So in a nutshell, what do you see as advances or changes for this year compared to last year?
So I'd like to add the stop, as we talked about on North Main Street. If we can do that, we're gonna play with that. We'll see how that actually works time-wise and it may make us a little fluid in terms of being able to stay right on that every half-hour thing, we'll see. What we will probably do is start at nine, not try to start at 7:30, 8:00, because we don't find that the people who open early, if they open at 10, they can still, if employees want to take it, they can. And then we'll run probably the last one, go back at quarter of five. That's my plan. Six days a week, we're not gonna run on Sunday. Again, that's a large part because of drivers, although I am developing a new habit, got it now, so that we will be having our own training program on the trolley. So I'm looking for drivers and we'll be doing the training ourselves, compliant with all the aspects that we need to be, even under the new DOT regulations. So that's gonna be great and it'll be what people really need to know to get the license for the trolley. So those are the big changes we'll make. The only thing I would say to the schedule is that we're not gonna start as early as we did. Because I don't think it's necessary, given the parking, there's plenty of parking downtown that time of day. But the police department's enforcement of that, the merchants, they went off and found places to park, the people who work downtown, there was no question about that. So you could really see the difference. So that was great and it really supported what we're trying to do as well.
Molly and Jolly are a fixture in the town and I thank you for what you do and for making the downtown a little less congested and just the smiles on the kids' faces when they see the trolleys go by and that the kids from the school get to ride on them once a year. It's a wonderful thing.
Well, let me tell you something. When you drive that trolley and you look up, everybody's always smiling. You think it's at you, but you know it's not. It's at the trolleys. It makes more than just the kids smile, so. But thank you so much and we really appreciate the support from the town on this. I do feel we're making progress.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
So what about the sign in the North Main Street?
So I did have a conversation with Barry on that last Tuesday. It's gonna be close. He is gonna get back to me with the timeframe. The issue is he has, as we all have heard, run into some supply chain issues with some equipment to finish the, that South Main, or that North Main Street portion. So I would anticipate meeting with him next week and having a better handle on where we may be. But I did have the conversation with him and Steve Randall last week.
That's great. We don't go to press with our brochure, which has the map and the routes in it. That won't happen until the end of March, so we have some time here, so we can work. Okay, we'll stay in touch. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kathy.
And if we get that spot, would we have approval to have a sign? I mean, I can come back later if you want.
I think you would have to come back.
Okay, that's fine. I don't have any problems. I always enjoy staying. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Next on the agenda, the trolley. The commercial vessel permit for barges up at the Libby Dock. We have a new version, I believe, that's sitting in front of us at the table here this evening. Looks like Amy's worked at getting this kind of consolidated into everything under one form here and getting all the information we need. The amount is on there for the barge companies to know.
Yeah, Amy went through it and we removed things like the, there was on like the Mount Washington form, there were things on there that didn't really apply to it, so.
Any other comments or...
Motion to approve the new form?
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Brian to approve the form. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I would just say that we would, we will add a footer on it as to the date that it was approved.
Right, yep, yep, sounds good. Okay, let's see. Discussion, a follow-up to last night, the deliberative session, which seems like it just got over a little while ago, but it was a long evening. Yeah. Personally, I thought it went well, a lot of good discussions, some dragged on a little bit, but I thought it was, my personal opinion was that we got through it all and I look forward to having the votes on in March, so. You have things you want to add, Jim?
I do, so for those who did not attend or those who did attend, there was a motion to move, I can't remember the warrant article number now, I believe it was 24, the ambulance contract to follow the operating budget. We've reached out to legal counsel, we've reached out to the New Hampshire Municipal Association and we're awaiting response from DRA. We're not sure if we're able to do that yet. So we believe we have, there's three items that are being taken under consideration. Number one, can we move the article and renumber the article? There was also a suggestion of moving that article to being right after the operating budget, which I believe was Article Four, Five? But keeping the number the same, so it would go Article One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Twenty-four, Six, Seven, Eight, or renumber the whole thing. The problem is in the DRA portal with the state, everything is set when we did the original numbering. So we have not heard back from DRA based on us reaching out to them this morning. So as soon as we know, we will let everybody know what we can actually do. So that's the one big thing that I just needed to get across to the community tonight. So that's the one big thing that I just needed to get across to the community tonight.
Thank you.
So the takeaway is don't print any signs yet, because we don't know.
Right. Any other comments from other board members?
I had a few things. One thing that I was surprised was that the, not surprised by this, the community as a whole, of course, was concerned about their taxes going up, because we have had an increase, there's a lot. There's from insurance and contracts and personnel expenses and all things that are beyond our control. However, when we finished the night, our budget was $200,000 more, which was kind of unusual, because we ended up with potentially a little bit higher tax rate than when we started the night, which is, I mean, I think we as a board and the Budget Committee and the, and our town manager, we shaved things down for a reason to get it to where it would be as prudent as possible. So I thought that was something that was a takeaway. Another takeaway I had was, it did make sense to me when one gentleman brought up that our capital, our capital reserve funds, if we're going to be drawing them down to a very, very low rate every year, maybe they need to be instead a capital revolving fund. If we're not going to, now the fire trucks, we've worked well with like the ladder truck. We did build that capital reserve fund for 10 years and then we spent it down. But if we're going to be spending it every year, maybe we just need to rename the funds so that they're more transparent to the public, that they know that, yes, this is a capital revolving fund, that money is going to be put in, it's going to be taken down to a low draw sometimes. Some years, it's going to be left up a little bit higher. Just something that we might want to consider.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Other business, do we have any other business this evening? Committee reports, Brian will start down there.
I have an energy meeting coming in a couple of weeks. Other than the meeting that we had last night, that's just about the only thing I've had in the last two weeks.
Luke?
I have a chamber meeting tomorrow morning. And there's been other ones, but it's kind of been a whole blur for the last week of meetings, meetings and non-meetings, so. Yeah, so that's what I have so far.
Yeah, I had, obviously, we had the election, you know, what, a week and a, a little over a week ago there. Deliberative session last night. We've had a couple of meetings with legal there, as issues were coming up, getting the warrants ready and stuff. And that was it for me. Dave?
I had one meeting with the friends of Adam and Jackie. That's the only thing I had.
Town manager's report.
I just would, I think everybody's aware at this point, we have a new police chief. So if you see Chief Warren on the street, please take the time to welcome him. He seems like he's excited to be here and look forward to a good working relationship with him and his department. And I'd just like to thank the citizens for the great turnout last night. It was good to see a couple hundred people in this building. Even though there may have been some disagreements, it was democracy in action. So it was good to see a good turnout. And then just remember to get out and vote in March. Other than that, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Questions from the press?
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Alyssa.
All right, thanks.
Oh, no questions?
No questions.
Oh, okay, thank you. Public input. Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments you'd like to make? Yeah, so the people on the TV can hear you.
Yeah, this is, I'm Louis Avahansky from Birch Hill Estates Road. I'm the president over at the birches of Wolfboro. I'm here with my operations manager. We had a meeting on the 30th of January with Jason Durants and Tavis Austin concerning Ten Granite Lane. The question that we had, and they said needed to be answered by the selectmen, when I had contacted you a few weeks ago, Brad, Amy had mentioned in passing about the money that was transferred over to the Humane Society for the care of the cats was recoverable. We're at a point now with the disposition at Ten Granite Lane that we need to know who's it going to be recovered from.
Okay.
Right now, the status right now is we, a writ of possession has been issued by the Third Circuit Court. We are scheduling to have an auction on the 8th of March at 4:00 PM. If somehow we're going to be involved with having to reimburse the money to the Humane Society, we need to know that now, because that becomes an issue with the auction on the property.
Okay, is that something we'd need to reach out to legal on, on that, Jim?
Yeah, I'm not prepared to speak on that at this point. If you can, Amy has your contact information?
Pardon?
Amy has your contact information?
I can give it to you now.
If you can give me your contact information, I've got a couple of phone calls that I got to make, because what you're saying to me is different from what I'm recalling.
Yeah, because I, we, we're totally in the dark about what's going on about with this stuff. We've been kicking, we've been at it with this particular property for 17 months now. That was initiated from the town declaring the building non-habitable. We went off, the town had a hearing on it. She was given 60 days to do something. She begged off for health reasons and went another 30 days. We decided at that point, based on the issuance that the building was non-habitable, we went for an eviction process. And it's taken us to now to finally go get through that. So we'd just like to know about, if we're going to have to, if somebody's going to be, is going to be recovered from somebody, we need to know, is it going to be us or whoever may purchase the property at auction?
Right.
And by default, if we don't get a bidder, it's the park.
Yep. Okay, yeah, I think after I spoke with you a while ago there, I was waiting to get in touch and hear back from the health officer in regards to her stance on the status of the property there and everything. So that's where I kind of got left with that. As Jim said, as far as recovery for, reimbursable for the cats and stuff, I honestly don't know.
It's my understanding that we paid for the cats and the reimbursable that are associated with the cats would be reimbursable to the town, because we did that. And it's my understanding that there's a grant that has been submitted with the state to try and recover those funds and we're just waiting to get an answer from that agency. Is that? Captain Libby, would you back that up or correct what I just said? So I don't think we would be going after anybody else for?
No.
The recovery?
No. No, we're just looking for recovering from the state, from the Department of Agriculture. Oh, okay.
I just, I want to confirm that, but I think that's where we're at and I don't think there's any other places to go.
Yeah, we're just waiting on them, that's it.
Okay.
Nothing for you guys.
Thank you.
So I answered your question somewhat there on that part?
I answered your question a lot.
Okay, good.
Well, that's good news.
That's easy.
I just want my information.
Yeah. Once I get that confirmed, I'll let you know, but that's pretty much my understanding.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you.
Any other public input?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everybody.